And the reason, what we're trying to do here today, we just have a real simple agenda. As many of you know, Facebook and social media is an incredible tool and resource. But it can also be the opposite. And about, gentlemen, help me. The council here is today Alderman Parmley, Alderman Powell, and Vice Mayor Lake Dora, City Recorder. If you don't mind, the folks that represent us Marion County, I'm gonna go ahead and get y'all to introduce yourselves and what y'all doing, then we'll get into a little sort of topic. Just, we're going to communicate, establish what happened, what's true and what's not, how we communicate to where we can communicate with our residents and the parents. And we do have one spokesperson for the parents, Ms. Sarah Lane. So if y'all want, if you don't mind, we're gonna do this sort of informal.
That's my first one.
We'll start with the new county mayor there, if he would like to introduce himself.
My name's David Jackson, elected county mayor, serves the county of Campbell for eleven half years mayor. Before I was a spokesperson for Mont Eagle, to pick you up from Rosemont Way. While it's come out of off store opens, and he insists that Mayor Campbell from Mont Eagle must come down and talk to you better.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mark?
Mark Griffith, Director of Schools in Marion County. This is my eighth year, finish my eighth year. Always supported Mont Eagle, and we're gonna continue to support Mont Eagle.
Thank you.
Mr. Case, I've been school board member, I represent District Two of Mont Eagle for about ten years now.
Thank you.
Billy, do you want to?
I'm Billy Gauder, I'm here today in my capacity as a county attorney, just at the request of the mayor, just if there are any legal issues involving the county, I'd be glad to, on their behalf and on behalf of the county commissioners that are here.
Parmley, we'll go with you and then come up to Bill.
I'm Cameron, I'm the county attorney, excuse me.
Matt Linsed, I'm Commissioner for Second District, Marion County. Marilyn has my phone number, if anybody needs to contact me, just give me a call.
Thank you.
I'm Joey Bloom, the new county commissioner for this area, and glad to represent y'all up here in Mont Eagle. Contact me anytime if I can help you.
Thank you, Joey.
I'm Gene Argus, going in my sixth term. As y'all representative, I live right through the mountain, about a creek. I'm easy to find, if anybody who needs to get over, they can get over me through there. The mayor there, I'm up here quite a bit though.
Say that one, Charles, you're with the Grande County Commission still, right? And of course, we just had Mr. Rollins come in, and he's with the Grande County, because we got three counties here which are very unique and unusual. Lex, do you want to do a formal title there?
Yeah, I'm Lex Orr, Vice Mayor of Town of Mont Eagle. I've been on the city council for the last eight to nine years, and thank everybody here for coming, there's a very important issue.
Harry?
My name is Harry Farmley, I'm an Alderman here in Mont Eagle, and anything I can do, I'm ready to do it.
Alvin?
My name's Alvin Powell, and I'm Alderman here in Mont Eagle also, and glad y'all come up and appreciate it, since we can't figure out what's going on.
And I'm Marilyn Campbell-Ronan, and I'm the mayor.
But we just all work together to get things done. And this is the City Recorder, Debbie Taylor. Sarah is here with the parents, we asked just one person, we met with them, Sarah Lane. And it, you know, it's really simple, but to have a spokesperson, because we met with about, what, fifty of y'all last week? So we'll just get to the point and make this as clear, precise, and start a better communication relationship. What happened, and today is, I want to think it was the latter part of August, I received a phone call saying that Mont Eagle School was shutting down. And at that point in time, we on, there were some elected officials that were being sworn in, you know, and new county mayor, Mr. Blevins, different folks, and it was like, guys, let's wait and see, it was Labor Day weekend, so we all discussed it, and contacted Mark at that point in time, and we received an email, basically saying, no, this is not happening, but this is a study we're doing, so we did post that.
That is correct.
Well, since that, it continued. So that was the reason, you were out of town in a meeting, so we said, you know, the longer we let something like this continue, then, and we were, we need to get to know each other. There is a sign-in sheet, please everybody sign in and prepare information so we can communicate both ways, the relationship us with you guys, and, you know, you with us. But as what we want to do here today is establish the facts per rumors and misunderstandings that have been out there. And so I'm gonna direct most questions to you, anyone's welcome to ask a question, and we'll speak in different parts, since you are the director of the school. When I called you, I told you, of course, we had heard that you were looking at shutting down Mont Eagle School. And so if you will address that partly, you would want?
Look, the county, we actually have an architect, let me tell you what started all this. We actually have an architect that's doing an audit on all of our buildings, all our facilities in the county. There was a conversation, he actually went and picked up some plans at Mont Eagle Elementary to stay here, and we're gonna put, let me say this, we're fixing to do an RFP on about forty to fifty thousand dollars worth of bleachers there, so let me go ahead and say, if we were gonna shut it down, we wouldn't put any more money in, let me just be honest with you there. So during that time, then the rumors got started that his conversation said that he don't see how we just, we can afford to keep that school up, keep it up. When you've got folks like, and out of the counties, that once you drop below three hundred, there is a conversation about whether to keep the school open, to be honest with you. To date, we have about, I think it's, well, we have a hundred and thirteen true Marion County kids, and they're today. We've got a hundred and two in the Mont Eagle city limits, so you're looking at two fifteen there of Mont Eagle kids. Then you've got sixty, somewhere in the area of sixty to seventy that are Grande County kids with no ties to Mont Eagle, no, you know, they live actually in Tracy City, we've got some Tracy City, Grugelauger, Palmer, Comont, and things of that nature. Now, we have, there's two on the roster, I've got the roster, confidentiality, I'm not gonna let you see that, just trust me on this, there's one from Morrison, Tennessee, which I think is McMinnville area, there's Simon there from Swanee, through the Swanee address. Now, I'm not sure that they're, what, you know, if they're Franklin County folks, or they might be, I don't know what, this is kind of unusual, as we say, this is unusual setting up here geographically, because it's where it sits. So, to be realistic, there was a county commissioner, two county commissioners that approached me on a situation here about educating Grande County kids, and I said, look, all we can do is look at it, that way, if that's when I come back, if I'm asked, I've looked at it. But what we do have to establish, and what this board, what I've asked this board to establish, would be a pecking order, and I think that Mont Eagle's done a pretty good job with that. If you've got a true Marion County kid that's in, kids in there, after over twenty-five, you're out of compliance with the state, there is a compliance teacher-student ratio effect.
That's per student, per teacher, correct?
That's correct. So if you bring in fifteen Tracy City kids in the eighth grade, and we've got fifteen Mont Eagle kids, that's thirty students, and we're out of compliance, so at that time, we have to have two teachers to serve those students. So I think what's probably gonna come out of this is that we're gonna establish a pecking order to serve Mont Eagle kids first?
Priority.
Yes, have to. Then, now, it's not a good situation, because what's gonna happen is you're gonna wait all the way up to a two-week window there, and then let five Tracy City kids in, or something like that to keep you in compliance, but what if after Labor Day, which some kids, some parents think it's not important to start school until Labor, after Labor Day, which we've seen that as well, if they, if they bring in two more Marion County kids that we have to take, Mont Eagle kids? So there, you're out of compliance again, and that's, that teacher body will cost you seventy thousand dollars, it costs the county seventy thousand dollars, that's salary fringes and everything, and that's, that's a Cadillac insurance policy with that, because that's the way we budget, we just put it in there to where, you know, we look at, if there's a ten thousand dollar insurance policy, and then you've got all your fringes built into that. So it wouldn't make sense to shave the grades off if you've got enough students to pay for that teacher, meaning you've got twenty-five students, the state gives you four thousand dollars.
Thought it was off, I apologize.
It's fine, I'm gonna make sure mine's off today.
If that was a good scene.
Well, I mean, we may as well shut them down now. See if you can get this thing on.
I told you it wasn't ringing before, I make sure I hear y'all whenever it rings now, Harry. Got it set up on our submarine, I apologize for that.
That's fine, if you've got, as I said, if you've got twenty-five kids in that classroom, the state gives you four thousand, and this, these numbers are approximate, county spends about seventy-five hundred dollars, that's four thousand from the state, about thirty-five hundred, somewhere a little less than thirty-five hundred comes from local, okay? Which, that, the Grande County kids, you know, we're not getting that, those local dollars for that, the true Grande County kids. So if you've got twenty-five kids, four thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, that teacher costs you sixty, seventy thousand dollars, and your thirty thousand is good. If you've got five kids that move in, that becomes a hundred and twenty thousand dollars with two teachers, you're twenty thousand and a hoe. So what, what comes out of this conversation is actually the board to look at establishing a pecking order, and I said, as I said, we've done a little better job this year at that, that the administration has on doing that. So it's, there becomes a time where, if you're gonna, if we're gonna educate eighty Tracy City kids, that needs to be a decision that the board would have to make, but we want to serve our true Mont Eagle kids first. But we can't afford to educate, you know, have that, have the ratio off to spend seventy more thousand dollars on that, on that, for another teacher.
Well, when you and I first started talking, of course, and just to reiterate, I think we've all learned a lot, you know, since this process, and also communication is the key in here, that we need with each other, so we can be fair and factual with the people we represent. And that's one of the reasons for starting this today, and of course, Mayor Jackson, now I know the school, which the school is a number one priority here, and the education and the future of our kids, and they're all of our kids, whether they're, we're parents or not. But my question to you, when we started this, was that there was a number provided through a grant, and I know where it came from, State Schools to Grant, they were breaking it up in a ratio, that number was much lower. So as you had asked the Department of Education, can you give me the corporate city limits number, which increased that number over half, correct?
Right.
Because I mean, I think we started out with ninety-nine and ended up with a hundred and five.
You've got corporate city limits, you're right at two fifteen.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, we were at two fifteen, when that first number that we were, was, was introduced to us, was like ninety-nine.
Now, ninety-nine, let me say this.
Is Marion.
Ninety-nine was a true Marion County.
Yeah, and then, but I'm saying, true corporate city limits of the town of Mont Eagle expanded that by the number of five, because it's, you know, my dad was pretty plain when he was growing up, but I have a stepbrother and sister, but how do I divide them to be my stepbrother and sister? How do we divide Mont Eagle to say, you know, there's certain things we have to do, but truly, this council represents Mont Eagle corporate city limits, whether it's Grande County, Marion, or Franklin, working with three county mayors, which is an opportunity, and three sheriffs, and, you know, many different departments, and it is an opportunity for us, you know, we just need to be better at that, but that number did increase by quite a bit versus what we started looking at then. And so, so you're saying now, and I know at one time, we had discussed the definition of a study of what they call a true elementary.
That's pre, that'd be pre-case, see?
So, and I guess I'm just saying, has the board taken any action, and when, are they planning on taking any action in the studies that are being?
Let me, let me say this, David Dickerson, I had, I met with Grande County superintendent last week, I told David that everything would probably be nailed down this time next year, because if we, here's, here's the thing about kids, whether they're Grande County kids, Marion County kids, they're kids, I mean, we, we love them, we're willing to be in the business. So it wouldn't be fair to David Dickerson if I said, no more Grande County kids. So I told him, I said, look, there might come a time in two years, so this time next year, if that study comes back and says, you know, you can't warrant bringing those, you know, out-of-county kids in, we got, unless they're a teacher, that's, that's a different thing. You can't let, we can't accept out-of-state students unless they're an employee of the system. Now, that's, that's in statute, that there's some issues years ago, that some, and we said in a kind of a funny place, you know, right there in the tri-states, where the, all three states meet, so there was some issues where Alabama folks were coming over, coming over, well, we didn't, that's, that was actually addressed with statute a few years ago, to where if they're an employee of, of the system, you come in, they can come into your system out of state. So, but there's nothing that says you can't let Grande County kids or in-state kids in, it's just to try to establish to where, to make sure your true Mont Eagle kids don't get left out, okay? When I say true Mont Eagle, I'm talking about their surrounding areas, Marion, Franklin, and?
And Grande, which are corporate city limits, is what we call.
Those are true Mont Eagle kids, okay?
Right, so let me ask this again, so now, is the study being this, that it's based upon the ratio pre-K through eight, and what are true ratio of one teacher to twenty-five, that are true Marion County and Mont Eagle students? Is that what we're looking at right now, that study?
Let me, let me say this, the study will probably look at, throw out all kinds of scenarios.
So there's multiple?
Oh yeah, and here's, and here's the thing, in, in every year, when you're dealing with a budget, there's always ten to twelve scenarios or action plans that come out of that to try to save money and look at things like that. None of those, you prob, the final product, general public only sees, when the commission slaps that gavel and that budget's passed, that's the only thing, you know, and classrooms are looked at, we actually cut six teachers this year across the county.
In the system.
In the system. One of those was at Mont Eagle. Now, we look at, there again, the ratio, classroom ratio, if you're earning that teacher, if we're getting that through the DEP, that's a whole different conversation, the basic education program, that's how we're funded, as a, as a county system or as a school.
Is that based on per student?
It is, it generates somewhere in the area of about four thousand dollars a student. Now, you get, there's, there's square footage scenarios, you get so much money for square footage, you get so much money for a kid that rides the bus, but that is actually a, it's not a spending plan, that is a formula generated to, to bring you the nineteen, twenty million dollars that state funds brings us. I would dare say, Mont Eagle's a Title I school, there today, we have a million dollars of Title I funds, that's distributed through the federal government, that's, when I say title and I say IDA, those are federal dollars. County gets about a million dollars. The four elementary schools are Title I schools, so that million dollars is split among those, except, we had to add one this year, because if you get above seventy-four percent free and reduced, then you automatically are mandated to put that school in, in Title. So basically, that million dollars gets split five ways, okay? And there's different areas, that title can be spent on equipment, title can be spent on assistance, teaching assistance, on actually teachers, bodies, so once you split that piece of pie five ways instead of four, then your general purpose budget, you have to start analyzing that to say, oh my gosh, if this is mandated, that, this chunk of money now, this, this two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, or this has to be distributed, pulled out and put over here at Quillwell High School, was the case this year. That's been, that's been a two-year process, because Jasper Middle fell into the free and reduced, the seventy-four percent free and reduced last year, so they become, they become Title I. Those numbers went down, so they off, they come out of that, but Quillwell High Schools went up, so they went, Quillwell High School come back in. So there, you're, you're looking at fifty thousand dollars cut out of your school right there, so the general purpose had to pick that up somewhere. Your IDA funds, those are, those are based on a special education population. We have, I don't know exactly what our population is at Mont Eagle, but I know we're about, we're about at seven hundred students countywide, out of the forty-two hundred students we have that receive IDA funds. A lot of different pots that generate those funds, and like I said, every, every dollar that gets spent on a student in the valley, that question has come up, about someone that's not here, and I think there's a meeting, they're coming, they're sending me tomorrow to have that discussion about a budget, but every dollar that's spent on a student in the valley, that same dollar gets spent on students at Mont Eagle, so there's no discrepancy in that area. Capital outline, capital projects, I dare say, this is probably one of the best facilities in the county, in Marion County, because we have done a lot of capital projects there, especially over my tenure, and this is a year, I'm fixing to do a fifty thousand dollar, approximate fifty thousand dollar bleach, because our bleachers were condemned, I mean, we actually had somebody go up there and look at them, and they're not safe for, for use, so that way, we, we take those out, and we, you know, do that RFP. But, I mean, I can honestly say that I'm not for busing kids down the mountain, I'm not at all, but I am for looking at taxpayer dollars and making sure that we serve our true Mont Eagle kids before we serve, you know, a hundred out-of-county kids.
Okay, so we've established two things here, that the rumors that were out there are incorrect, are rumors, we're gonna leave it at that, and the other, that currently all that's going to be happening, and this will soon start, is studies, and there'll be multiple studies, and looking at the ratio of students, which we now determine those numbers, is that correct?
There's actually a graduate student along with some folks, that's actually gonna help conduct this study, it's probably gonna be a thesis or something like that that they're looking at. This study, let me say this, these, these studies are continuous, I've said that before, but this, just because we end one now here at Mont Eagle, there might be one take place elsewhere.
Well, that's, that's fine, but I'm going back to communication and sort of timelines that we can have, to have this information that we're talking about, these studies that will be saved.
You're talking probably, you know, this time next year.
Right, and I understand that, but I'll say, and let me clarify this, I don't know when your board meetings are, but I think your next Department of Education board meeting, and this is a fair, on my behalf, if you want to say for the town, that, you know, a relationship works two ways, it's Marion County with us, and us with Marion County, it's not a one-way thing, and we haven't been real active, you know, I mean, well, Debbie just took office, sometimes you'll probably see me more than we would, like Mayor Jackson would, because they did see us a lot, because we have a lot of projects going on up here with, with the city side, but that we could be there and be involved in those meetings. Now, am I correct, the next meeting will be September the twenty-third, the next?
I think that's right.
And I think it's at six P.M.?
It's at four thirty.
Four thirty, okay, the time's changed. And where's the Department?
Two oh four Betsy Park Ground.
Two oh four, is that your office?
House of Phillips Furniture, yes.
I know where your office is, so it's Department of Education, so we have that, if people want to attend, because you, it's the same thing here, you know, you have the opportunity for meetings.
Now, there won't be.
Can I make a statement?
Yeah, I'm gonna give it to them.
I just want to be sure, whoever's doing this study, and you, and I think you already know what I'm fixing to say, because you said it a while ago, is to realize that we do have a unique situation up here with Grande and Marion County, and you did say something else too, these are kids.
Right.
And kids are very important to me, and I just don't, I don't want to see anything out of my career, to be honest with you.
Right, right.
If it devastates Mont Eagle.
And then, let me say this, that, you know, by doing these studies, they're, they're done to, to save the school, not to close the school. I mean, if you, if you see that you're channeling or funneling, you know, five, six-hundred thousand dollars, you know, how does, when an architect comes up out of the blue, just a very neutral party, comes up and says, how do you afford to keep that open? You know, then you start doing these studies, and say, well, let's make it more cost-effective. If it, if it is that we can't educate the Grande County kids, then that's a conversation we need to look at.
As far as the school being, you're saying is to save them, and this situation is not, we've already got the school, and it's gonna lose it, so the study's going opposite on this one. Now, I'm, I'm as open as being, I'm dumb, I ain't smart, but I, I don't want to see my own school, I mean, I think it's one of the best schools in?
Absolutely.
I guarantee it's one of the best schools in the county, I don't know about statewide, but.
It's, it ranks in there with State as well.
Yes, sir.
Parmley?
Thank you.
Do you want to just go ahead and, we'll just let the board know, we'll let them speak here.
He's pretty well.
And then, I mean, because this is communication, so Lex, do you?
Nothing at this time.
Matt, James, you are representative?
Well, this is, this is kind of new to me, of course, we had heard the rumors, and I went, I guess, last week.
Actually, the day of.
Yeah, the day of, and I went and talked with Mark, and Mark said, look, we're not shutting the school down, I had some folks, I've got relatives up here that called me, and I said, you know, I've relayed to them what Mark told y'all here today, but this is kind of new to me, and I thought that's what I relayed, I said, I think it's kind of rumor, I said, you know, they're not planning on shutting the school down. And, and when he referred earlier to commissioners that had approached him, it was commissioners from this district.
No, 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 it was not.
Right, and it's true.
Because, like Harry said, I'm, I hate to see anything change, but on the same token, we have to answer to all the taxpayers of Marion County who see kids coming from McMinnville and everywhere else, and we're putting dollars into these, we want to make sure that these Mont Eagle kids are took care of, corporate kids, before anybody else.
I understand.
You know, because if you have to lay off a teacher, that's hurting these kids that live inside the city limits here, that's, you know, that's hurting them, and that's what we don't want to happen.
And that's what we said when we were, and actually, we found out, and as we both stated, let's just lighten my numbers, we found out there was, counting the encompass of two, there was actually a hundred and five more students versus than what the first information that was out there from a grant, and that came from a grant research on just a section. We realized later where it came from, it was given to us, and we said, this can't be right, because I spoke with each one of y'all, and spoke with Mark, and, and I said, can y'all run these numbers, we need to know what's really there, and we found out it was a hundred and five more, you know, which is quite a bit of difference in that calculation.
And I can honestly see somebody driving from Palmer, Comont, or wherever to bring their kid here, because like you said, it's, it's probably?
It's a great.
They best are one of the best schools in this area, and I can see them bypassing and driving past five or six schools to get to this school, I understand that, but on the same token, should the taxpayers of Marion County pay to educate a child from McMinnville or Palmer? See what I'm saying?
And we're just trying to clarify what's going on here in the study.
And let me, just right quick, let me throw this in there, as far as losing grades, all right, you, we've already established it's not gonna close, okay? And you're always gonna have about twenty-five to thirty kids in those, or twenty-five kids that want to be in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, okay? So if you're heating the building, you got the building open, you got that, it wouldn't make sense, it's not cost-effective, let me say that, it's not cost-effective to drop those grades, because you've got pre-K six, pre-K five already here, the building's being heated, those twenty-five's bringing in a hun, and I keep, I hate to keep throwing dollars around, but it, you know, it's what it's about, it's dollars being cost-effective. So those twenty-five kids bringing in a hundred thousand dollars, those, those three grades are three hundred thousand dollars, and that teacher, those three teachers cost you two-hundred and ten thousand, so even ninety thousand's a good. So I mean, talking about saving grades, talking about this, that, and the other, if you got the building open, it doesn't make sense to close the door. You're gonna heat it and take the air conditioning noise. Right, that's what I'm saying, so as far as dropping that.
So that didn't make any sense, after the numbers increased, and the other thing, based upon the quality of the education, I mean, the T cap scores are extremely high, and we all have, that it works, and it's about, and again, we love our kids, you know, we've got, but, and this is the part we all represent, we as a council represent Grande County, Marion County, Franklin County corporate city limits.
Right.
And we have to do that equally, so when we use our numbers, you know, again, we will use those equally, even though your counterpart, Franklin County's a counterpart, and Grande County's a counterpart, and we will continue, and we're gonna have great relationships, and Joey, I know that, do you want to say something? You're new, you're on board.
Well, I, I was at a seminar, actually, before I even sworn in, and when this blew up, you know, and I, yeah, I was contacted, and I looked there at the Facebook page about stuff, and read up on it, and I like, I like seeing people's opinions, I don't care if it's y'all and Alderman, or these people out here mean a whole lot to me too, you know, and, but, you know, it can't really weigh on it, in on anything till I hear both sides of the conversation, then I can kind of get an idea of the, of the big picture, that's what I was trying to get to, and I believe, it makes sense what he's, you know, what he's saying, I understand exactly what he's saying, so at least the dialogue's open between everybody now.
Sarah?
We need to do this more often, ready to get together.
Sarah?
We can come down there, and you can buy our supper.
Well, or he'd come up here and buy our supper, the tax dollars. We have, we have Sarah, Lane, do you want to say anything? She's the parents representative here, we did ask her to come if she wanted, as a spokesperson or just to attend the meeting, as in that way, we didn't have, you know, five hundred people, and they have a very valid concern, you know, that's, that's their kids, but it's their kids, you know, collectively, so.
Well, of course, you know, having a child that goes there, it's harder to really hear the money. the money side of this. If I think about her, and we do live Marion County, and I do think about, you know, once she got to the position where sixth grade, where would she go? You know, I wouldn't choose to drive her off this mountain every day to get the education in the county that we pay taxes in. So it's definitely a big concern for her education and safety. And then another concern that comes up, you know, if you do this study now, and you end up shaving off sixth, seventh, and eighth, how long would it take before the study came? If our numbers are not enough to keep open a true elementary school?
Those are legitimate concerns.
I should know like you just waited.
Mayor, Gene.
Well, I would, Mr. Creep, if you reference the three hundred number?
Yes.
And what's that, can you explain that a little more? Three hundred students, is, you're saying that you have to have three hundred students to have a viable, am I missing that?
No. Now, what Bradley County, folks like Bradley County, and those folks say, that they start having conversa, I've been a Gallowayer, they start having conversations to close schools when it gets below three hundred. Powell's Crossroads had three hundred and three when it was closed in two thousand. I actually looked at, looked through that in the archive, that's when we closed, not we, they, closed, Powell's Crossroads closed Griffiths Creek, and made the one elementary school there at Whitwell on top of the hill, that was open in two thousand and one. But Powell's Crossroads is not in a unique setting like your Mont Eagle is.
Well, three hundred is just kind of the tipping point, when you have to.
It depends, there's, I would say that there's, like, you've got Rualvale in Monroe County that's probably got a hundred and seventy-eight kids, you've got Coker Creek in Sane County, and Telco Plains area, those are geographically hardship locations, when I say, I don't mean it in a way that, it would be hard to bust them to Madisonville, or bust them to wherever. So those are, those elementary schools were probably less than two hundred, to be honest with you. But, but they look at that ratio there, I mean, I'm not gonna say that Tim Blankenship, the director up there, don't look at those.
And not that extra, extra, deliberate activities at the school are a must for a good education, but we feel as parents, you take our sixth, seventh, and eighth to them somewhere else, they're gonna not be able to be involved in any of that. You know, at first, it would be taxing just to get your child to school, if you're traveling off the mountains, let them be involved in sports or anything such as that, it's only gonna add to that. And we just hate to see our kids out and things like that.
I just hope you all consider this, you do consider the unique situation we got up here, and we're unique in Mont Eagle in a lot of ways.
You're very unique.
Mayor, Mayor Jackson, did you want to say something?
I agree with Mark, you know, Miss Lane said here, hate to start comparing dollars to children and stuff, and we certainly don't want to try to bust these children off the mountain, and why I've heard here and that, and not being involved in county politics that was recently, about the scores, the T caps, appears that Mont Eagle has a great school, and a great staff, and did a great job of teaching the students, but we do have to look at the dollar, we come to taxpayers of the whole county, and I think, as we've heard here, it's shown that schools, or if you do, if they spend five dollars, and police and stuff, there's no closing the school, I think that was the first thing that happened, it's not gonna happen. And I think we need to see what this study comes back to, and go from there, and you have open dialogue at that time. But we've got to take consideration, you know, tax dollars and the children, we can't just look at the dollars and just look at children, we gotta look at them both. And I hope that's where we can work out, if we can continue what we're doing out here and that.
Mr. K, your school board, Sarah.
Well, I, like I said, I've been involved in Marion, in the school board for ten years, and I've always had a good relationship with Mont Eagle, and this is not the first time studies have been done out here or anywhere across the county. As part of the budget process, we want to know, we have to utilize every dollar that we have, and we have to maximize, the shrink in dollars, we have to do everything we can to get as much as we can with. I don't read Facebook, so when this thing blew up, I got several emails, and I had to call Mark and ask him what's going on with their thing, it had, this stuff has not come to the school board. What Pete's doing, and the administrators are doing, what we asked him to do, not just for Mont Eagle, but every school. And it all goes through, and we had to cut teachers, we had to cut various things, or add them to one school, take them away from another, and nobody ever wants to go backwards. And so I understand that, but I will tell you that none of this information that we're doing right now, we have not had time to even look at, it's just extremely premature. And the school board would have a decision on what to do on those things, and I will tell you, as one board member, one board member only, I will have a very hard time ever justifying to vote for a child to be bused fifteen, twenty miles from his home. I wouldn't want anybody doing that to my child, and in turn, I wouldn't want to ever do that to anybody else. So, whatever assurance that is, we do have compassion with our children, and Mont Eagle School has always been a high performer, it's always been, it's been an icon on the mountain over here, when we have even private school kids that want to get into the school, like Gene said, well, I'll go, because it's that good of a school. But as Superintendent said, we have to establish some pecking orders, and there's some time we have to control the growth that goes in to make it cost feasible for us, so that's what we're doing. And when these things got out, it was, there was a lot of anxiety, and I don't know if anybody here now sent me an email, my email's been down, so I've not been able to respond to anybody, so they wouldn't leave me a phone number to call them back, so I couldn't, I was out of communication. I called the superintendent, I said, get a hold of this person, tell them that, you know, we're gonna be taken care of here. But that's where we are, and until, until a lot more information comes in, it's probably only be on our agenda to even discuss until we get a clear vision of what we're gonna be doing, that's all. And you. When did Swaney, did they drop two years ago, did they drop sixth grade?
No, they haven't been, they haven't been a sixth grade in a long time, because I know at least four or five years they haven't, and it may have been before, it's been many years. I don't, I don't even, it's been quite some time ago, but I don't remember. But, and I'm gonna recap quickly, and one of the things that I will say on the behalf, and I agree a hundred percent with Gene and Harry, and of course, our board, we think we got an incredible school up here, which said has proved with the ratio of T caps, as a contributor, you know, and we are contributor of revenue to all three counties, is that we feel we didn't choose our unique, great location we're in, because that's really a positive. But we are in that location, that is sort of the highest point from Chicago to Miami, which we use with tourists, so we'll look at the positive side of it, however, it is in a remote area from the rest of Marion County. And so for that reason, that we have the need to have the pre-K three way, understanding that there is a ratio when there's public dollars, but we are also Mont Eagle Corporate, Grundy, Marion, and Franklin, and those numbers have now been considered in that mix. So as these are done, that we communicate more with you guys, because we're all part of the same family, and that y'all communicate more with us. So that's another reason for having the signing sheet, and so that way, you will get bombarded more, sir, I promise you that, Mr. K, you know, but in a very structured and fair way. Because I've spoken with each one of you in the last two weeks that represented us, and as you said, guys, I didn't want y'all to be lynched, like, you know, we've all been lynched at times, we will never stop social media, it is a tool that's out there, look how many people are on every one of them, however, we also use it as a resource to be factual and fair to the people we represent. And that's how we're gonna try to do from this point on, and I think that's what we've done, David, we, you know, now, mayor of the county, we've worked as mayor, as towns before, and that's what we've done in the last two years, correct, since two and a half years since we've worked together. And I know this is what the council, and that what they do, and we'll be, we'll be having some other, you know, things that we can work together more, and the Department of Education's part of it. But we would like to have your information, and we will get you ours, and Sarah, is that okay with you, and just, and I say you're the spokesperson with us, you know, as far as representing parents.
Yes, sir, are you happy, I mean, you feel better about this?
Not really, but this helps.
What's what I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna say you're completely satisfied, I'm just asking, are you feel better as a parent representative?
It feels better to know that they're gonna study, this is gonna be looked at, you know, by whatever the team is, I think it's good to know that they're gonna study, look at, get all the facts together before they make any decision. But as far as, it'll better, I mean, we're always, we'll be anxious about it until the study comes in, you know, and we start.
I, for one, wish they were gonna study. I'd like to.
I agree with you.
And we do, too, but they're gonna study them all, there's eight, there's eight communities, right, and how many schools do you have total?
We got ten schools totally, and this, this study doesn't only incorporate Mont Eagle, there's a few more.
And so how many, and you have ten elementary schools?
No, I have ten schools total.
Okay, one is the.
You've got, you've got South Pittsburgh Elementary, that's pre-K six, you've got Jasper Elementary, that's pre-K four, you've got Whitwell Elementary, that's pre-K four, and you've got Mont Eagle, that's pre-K eight.
But you've got middle schools down either way.
Yes.
We don't have a middle school, Grundy County don't either.
So how many middle schools do you have?
You got two middle, you got a Whitwell middle school, and you have Jasper.
All right, and then how many high schools?
You got a seven twelve, South Pittsburgh High School, Junior High City, and you've got a ten twelve, Central Prep Academy, that's the new school for At Risk that we opened this year, and you've got the nine twelve, Marion County High School, and the nine twelve, Whitwell.
I'm gonna ask this question, and you can explain this to me, because I found this out, as you know, we will soon be paying more taxes because of two thousand and four law, that was not implemented to two thousand and seven, and everybody in the state will be paying the liquor by the drink, once that's determined, and that's fair, that's an additional tax that people pay. But, I mean, it was a state that got the money and didn't distribute it, you know, and we're ready to do it once that's determined, but what, what is the classification, is it Richard Harding School? Now, explain that just to me, because I know, this has come up in looking at dollars, it's part of the Marion County system, which is public, but it's not functioned as a public entity.
Let me, let me say this, it's not part of, and if you go out in West Tennessee, there's a, since the Shelby County, Memphis City, if you ask, oh, there's several small school districts that's broken off in the Germantown, Bartlett area, that are small, the special school districts now. And basically, Richard Hardy is a special school district, it has nothing to do with Marion County schools, except when it comes times for tax monies to be distributed, there's thirteen percent that goes.
To them.
To them, trust me, I can tell you, to the penny. So, it's a special school district, and if you go out into, there's a lot of them in West Tennessee.
And there's a lot, but you said that, what year was that, the breakup of how that this was, when did this happen?
This, this was, I couldn't tell you when this happened, but all I know is now that, I use, I reference Shelby County, Memphis, when all that happened, the special school districts got reinforced by being able to break off of Shelby County and make their own school districts, and that's, that's an example of what Richard Hardy's like. Now, Richard Hardy, to my knowledge, has always had a charter, never been part of Marion County's school system, it was a, something like a company school system in nineteen twenty-seven, when, the name was not even Richard Hardy then, it was Deptford, Deptford School District. And basically, it's a, I think they've got pre-K, it's a pre-K twelve school, about three hundred students.
But it does function as an independent school district within the Marion County corporate city limits, even though it's two separate districts, is what you're explaining.
Instead of independent, they use the term special school district, but, yeah, and it gets a portion, it's, they've got their own superintendent, they've got their own principal, they've got their own school board, they've got a three-member school board, and they get a portion of tax dollars. An example would be, we floated the twenty million dollar bond, and some of the last renovations, capital projects we did at Mont Eagle in oh six, oh seven.
It's two of five.
They got a portion of those dollars.
Two point eight million dollars.
Yeah, they got, they got two point eight million out of twenty million.
That's something else, it's a little complicated to understand, but since we've been looking at this whole issue and tax dollars, it's a different, it's a different creature down there, but taxes are distributed out of public dollars, is what I was getting at.
And we've got another area, and I'll be quiet, I don't know about where to go, but on the other side of South Creek Mountain, and in Millens Cove, we ran in this a couple of years ago, and what we had, a lot of those kids, instead of driving all the way back across South Creek Mountain, are going all the way through twenty miles through Millens Cove, we get to Jasper, to Whitwell, all those kids over there were going to Red Bank and other places, well, Hamilton County cut them off, said, no more, if you live in Marion County, you're not coming to school with Red Bank anymore. Some of those kids that went there and were senior in high schools, went there their entire life, they had to start, so we were on the receiving end, on the other end of that, and just the way we're geographically located, and with some of these mountains and stuff, it's tough.
Franklin, Franklin County cut us this year.
Yeah.
Everyone, we thank you for being here.
Can I say one more thing, when we talk, when we think about the pecking order, we also need to think about some people that are in Marion County, that are in White City, Squatchy out there.
Yeah, those are Marion County students.
That's one of the things, you know, they're in Marion County, but they're on the other side of Tracy City, and we need to keep those in mind, too. And you mentioned Swaney, I think, if somebody outside of Franklin County was to go to Swaney, they'd pay tuition, is that correct, the, anybody know that?
I'm not aware of it.
I think, I think that's correct.
Would that be an option in the situation, if, you know, if it became down to?
Oh, you're asking that?
Yeah, I'm just saying, think about that, you know, if a Tracy City kid, if it came down to it, to keep it open, they could pay tuition, would that be?
And here's the thing about, like I said, if, we've got, talking about unusual situations, we've got a kid in Macedonia, in the building, I'm talking about, that is actually in Dade County, Georgia, all right? So Marion County bus runs right by his house, this is how ridiculous it is. We can't, state law says we can't enroll that kid where a bus goes by unless we charge seventy-five hundred dollars, which is the tuition that's spent, so we're charging, so I've been in conversation with Dade County about, if it costs them, it would cost them twelve thousand dollars to run a bus over there annually, so they're looking to get the board, their board to approve paying that tuition to us.
To get that child.
For seventy-five hundred, to pick that child up, which is, you know, there's all kinds of laws out there, but the portion of the tuition could be entertained, but what you would be asking for on your, with your, the formula to figure that, is you look at what the state gives you, and as opposed to what the county spends on each child, so it'd be, it'd be about a three thousand dollar tuition. But that would be something to where David Dickerson and I, and this is what I talked him about, something I talked him about, I said, David, you know, if we take, if we take sixty Tracy City kids, somewhere in the area of a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollars, and that would save you from ever having to build on to Tracy City Elementary, or ever how that, that goes, you know, you got, it's always, and like I said, there's, there's ten, twelve plans, busting plans, and plans, action plans that are looked at every year, and, you know, a lot of them never come back.
That would still depend on the state of the bill.
Again, we have this views, we're not closing their study plans, and there may not be the possibility of going to what you call, the definition of true elementary with public school, that is, that notion may not even be.
And here's the thing about, like I said, you're heating the building anyway, so you've always got twenty-five, you've always got twenty, twenty-five, thirty kids that would fill those grades up, so, and I hate to go back to dollars and cents, but it just, it's.
Do you have, you have a question? One more question back here.
I'm Cheryl Smith, I'm the Assistant Principal of Mont Eagle, and tonight, I'm acting as Miss Lane's liaison, because she could not be here, she has a doctor's appointment, that she's having some health issues, and she wanted me to let you know that staff and students have some concerns, and she's written these up, Mr. Bradford, for you, and she would ask that you address these concerns in an email to her, and she would be glad to see that your answers are passed along to those who are concerned about this.
If you don't mind, what we would like to do, again, is establish a way of communicating, we do actually pay GCTV to put our, to put our meetings on, we want to do these, I mean, because we forget what we say, and if. to do these, I mean, because we forget what we say, and if people want to watch us, they can't, and we're also going to start YouTube-ing those, that's the reason we're here, we, we do it for all of them, correct, guys? And, like I said, we're going to actually get to where we YouTube are on, because we are all here for our children, we're here for our community, if we're not, we need to all go home, you know, I mean, whether we're politicians, or appointed, or elected, or are, you know, and that's the reality in this, so that's the reason to be transparent and communicate, but to be factual and fair with all parties, too, and that's what we're trying to do as best as we can, and we will stay abreast, so if we can get contact information for everyone that we can put in our office database, then whatever, we exchange as far as, you know, cell phone numbers and stuff like that, I gave you mine, you know, text a lot of times, or call, you've got that twenty-four seven, and now it rings real loud, I heard that, but, you know, we will get back with you, we all want to work together for the betterment of our children, our future, our communities, and we happen to be blessed to have three counties and, and three, you know, three areas to work with, and to have a better relationship with the new councils, new mayors, new commissioners, and a few people have been there for a while, so, thank you for coming.
Remember how much we love Bonnie?
Yeah, but we love our home.